I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, Mr. Peary is excused. I don't believe does anyone have any announcements? Nope. I need to make a change to our agenda. So I will, we need to add an F six, acceptance of the candidates' positions. So I need a motion to add F six under finance.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll approve the agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We also have before you the minutes from March 13th. Any changes in the budget study session and executive session from March 27th? Did anyone have any changes or questions? No? Motion to approve.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No correspondence. We move to our first public comment session. Ask you to walk to the microphones, give your name and address so we can follow up if we need to. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? No? Okay, then we will move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Claus. Today is our final presentation prior to tonight's adoption of the 2017-18 budget. And we're going to review the New York State budget, which was enacted last week, a couple of weeks ago. We're also going to review the final 2017-18 Clarence budget with the final tax levy, tax rate, and five-year budget projections. So we're going to start with a little chart that summarizes what happened with the enacted New York State budget. First, there was a total education increase of $1.1 billion over the current year. That roughly is $140 million than the governor's executive budget that was put out in January. So the Senate and the Assembly added $140 million to the original governor's proposal for a total increase in state aid. The thing that was very different than the governor was the foundation aid increase. It was $270 million more than the governor, and the total foundation aid increase is $700 million this year. One thing that was proposed in the executive budget by the governor was to change the formula for distributing foundation aid. The foundation aid formula did not change in the final budget agreement. It is preserved, and it's going to be fully phased in over the next three years. For Clarence, the foundation aid increases ranged anywhere from 2.7 percent to upwards of 10 percent. We were on the low end, and we received about a 2.7 percent foundation aid increase, which is about $280,000 total. Not enough to balance our budget, but nonetheless better than the governor's executive proposal, so we thank our legislators for that. A couple of other things with the New York State budget. Charter schools will be reimbursed by an additional $500 per student for 2017-18. For us, that's not a big impact because we have very few charter school kids. For some school districts, that is a big impact. That impact will be borne by the state, not the district. The expense-driven aids, transportation, BOSEs, special education, those are fully funded at about $300 million. Little bit lower than what the governor originally thought. And then some other things for the New York State budget. There were no adjustments to the tax cap. There were some proposed adjustments, but they did not make it through the final budget. There was no educational tax credit this year. It was proposed, but it didn't make it into the final budget. One thing that did make it into the final budget is the governor receives a little bit more power if the budget needs to be changed as a result of a loss of federal funds. So in the budget, the governor can propose a mid-year adjustment, and the legislature gets 90 days to respond. If the legislature does not respond to the governor's proposal within 90 days, then it is enacted and becomes law. In the past, it was just the legislature that had the authority to make mid-year budget corrections. The last time there was a cut in aid mid-year was in the early 1990s. Hasn't happened for a long time, and we're hopeful it doesn't have to happen this year. There was about $100 million in the enacted budget of other program stuff. $50 million for community schools, $18 million for an initiative called My Brothers Keeper for young African-American men, and $35 million for after-school programs. Clarence does not qualify for any of those particular grants. So, going to review the 2017-18 budget that the board is voting on tonight. First, some assumptions on the revenue side. We're assuming a sales tax increase of about 2 percent. Our local revenues to remain flat. We are increasing our appropriated fund balance by half a million dollars. That's the way that we're making up the difference between the amount of state aid we needed in order to balance the budget and the amount of state aid we actually received. So it's going to go from $1.2 million to $1.7 million in appropriated fund balance. The tax levy will be at the cap level of 1.74 percent. The school aid increase is about 2.7 percent in foundation aid. There is a potential for a reduction in federal funds. We have received kind of an organizing spreadsheet that allows us to take a look at what that reduction might be. The best we have information for right now is perhaps about $100,000 of the close to $1 million in federal funds that we get would pretty much be guaranteed to be cut according to what happens at the federal level. So that's it on the revenue side. On the expense side, our wages are up 3 percent overall. Our retirement system costs are down this year. Our special education costs are increasing by about 2 percent. Our debt service is costed out per the schedule. Our healthcare expenses are up a little under 5 percent, and all other costs are up about 1 percent. So given these assumptions, here's the budget in the three parts that is required by law to be presented to the Board of Education. First, the administrative budget. There's about a $280,000 increase year-over-year in the administrative budget, and it's broken down by the large categories in this table. The capital budget, about a $284,000 increase, and that would include employees in the operations and maintenance area. And then finally, the instructional budget, which is up about $1.5 million year-over-year, which includes teaching and some non-instructional staff as well. So as a percentage of the budget, the administrative and the program budget is, and the capital budget are all about the same as they were last year as a percentage of the total budget. So the proposal to be voted on by the board tonight for approval is the 2017-18 total budget of $80.2 million. And again, our budget this year is 78.1 million. We're going to be able to raise a little under $800,000 in property taxes. The 1.3 million is from other revenues, and it includes the $500,000 increase in appropriated fund balance. Again, some projections, and these five-year revenue projections changed as a result of the state aid number changing and the appropriated fund balance number changing. So these are different than what we gave the board in March. They're not, the bottom-line number isn't different, but the categorical numbers are different. So you can see year-over-year for the next five years what our anticipated revenue increases are, and these are the assumptions that are built into these five-year plans. Sales tax shows an increase for 1718, then another 2 percent annually. Local revenues remain flat. The tax levy is low this year. The cap number, these particular numbers reflect a 3 percent tax levy annually, which would include anticipated exemptions. The appropriated fund balance increases this year and then stays the same for the next five years. That might have to be tweaked depending upon the state aid that comes in. And the state aid is based on historical increases in the current political environment. So this is our five-year revenue projection. On the expense side, we built in a 3 percent wage increase annually. There are projected retirements that are also built in here. Benefits rising 4 percent, health insurance at 5 percent, contractual and supplies at 2 percent, BOSEs at 3 percent, and our debt service, an increase for the bonding of our current capital project, and then it stabilizes after next year. So two things that are necessary by law that the public will receive. First, the public gets a postcard. Rick, is this the thing that's on the postcard or is it the next thing?
Uh, no, that's the postcard.
This one? So by law, the public must receive a postcard with very detailed information, and it's called the Clarence Central Schools Budget Notice. And this is all of the information that is required by law to be on the postcard. And it shows the adopted budget that the board will vote on tonight, and it shows a contingency budget as well. This is the property tax report card. It has more information on it. It is also used to project the levy, and it has some enrollment information and some other things, including a review of our fund balances and reserves. So this is another necessary element of the budget process. So this has stayed the same from the last couple of months that we've met with the board. What will the estimated tax increase on a 1.74 percent levy be? Well, it's about $14 for every $100,000 of assessed value. So in our district, we use a $200,000 house as the average. That would be about $28 a year. The real dollar increases here are likely to be lower than this, perhaps much lower than this, once the total assessed value of the town of Clarence is created and given to us in August when the board sets the actual tax rate. So the tax levy is 1.74 percent, and it will yield about $790,000. The tax rate at this month is estimated at $14.67 per thousand, but we're very confident that it will actually be lower than that. So some details about the public budget vote. First, the vote is on May 16th, 2017. It's the same day for every school district across New York State. It runs from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in our high school gymnasium. There will be two propositions for the public to vote for on May 16th. Proposition number one is the budget, the $80.2 million budget, which includes the 1.74 tax levy increase. And the second proposition is for the purchase of nine buses. They are voted on separately. We also have three open seats for the Board of Education, and there are exactly three candidates running for those open seats. So once the ballots are cast, Tricia Andrews-Madstock and Don Snyder will be elected to the Board of Education on May 16th. These are all of the meetings that we've had in public where we've discussed the budget. There are two more mandatory meetings in May. On May 8th, we will have a regular board meeting, and that will include the public budget hearing. It's the same information that we've shown you over the last couple of months, but it's mandatory that we present it again on May 8th. Then on May 16th, we have the public budget vote. So that's an overview of where the state was and ended up and where we are. Any questions from the Board of Education?
A quick question. Just for clarity, on the federal grants that we feel like we're going to maybe see a $100,000 reduction, how exactly will we treat that? Is that going to be effective for a full school year next year? Is it a partial year? How does that work out?
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, the grant that we're worried about getting reduced or no funding, Kristin ministers, and it's basically staff development. So what we would have to do is supplement that staff development through the internal movement or maybe do a little bit less.
Okay. I was going to ask, that was my next question. We have the flexibility then to make trade-off decisions if it comes to that.
And I think the grant period runs from September to September. Is that how it runs? Or September to August?
September to August.
Right. So it's a little different than the budget here, Mike.
And then I guess just, I guess more of a comment, but correct me if I'm wrong, but if, I'm looking at the tax rate. So the tax levy is 1.74 percent, but given the benefit of the town growth, the actual tax rate people should see, assuming no personal revaluation, should be less than a percent?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other Board of Ed questions? Ms. Claus, should we open it up to the community for any questions? Any community questions on the budget? Mr. Showalter.
Guys, just a couple of questions on the revenue projections. Got the tax levy, anticipated rise by 3 percent annually. How realistic is that, number one? I mean...
I think it's pretty realistic. Each year, the town growth factor itself has been coming in over 1 percent. It's been as high as 1.5 percent. So we get back to the beginning. On top of that, the state's growth factor can go as high as 2 percent. So if we look at that, it could be 3.5 percent. Or if we hedge the state factor and knock that down a little bit, it's where we're estimating for 1.5 and 1.5.
I mean, this year, we're at 1.74. What would be different next year? You think we'll have a higher growth rate in the state?
One of the reasons that it's lower than the 3 percent this year is the little additional state aid against the capital project.
Okay.
And what we did remember for the capital project is we fronted $3 million for the project out of our balances. So by getting aid on something that we're not having a debt service payment on, that lowered the total tax levy number that we can get.
Okay. So you, but you think realistically we'll be back up around 3 percent the next couple of years?
Yes.
I notice we plan to stay at the fund, the fund balance at 1.7 million the next couple of years as well? That's realistic? You can sustain that?
I think it's realistic, and you may need to use some reserves when you look at anticipated revenues against anticipated expenses.
Will we run out of reserves at some point?
Well, sooner or later, you would look at it that way. We're counting on state funds, additional retirements, things like that haven't been built into an agency.
All right. And lastly, you know, the next couple of years, I see, looks like we're about, even with the revenue projections versus the expenses, looks like we're about $300,000 a year short.
And that's where, what we wanted to do is not show that 3.7 increasing for reserves. Because a lot of those things are estimates, we anticipate using some of those reserves to offset that $300,000. Also, as the state increases their aid, I know the aid gets...
Maybe, maybe.
But if they do, a lot of times they are throwing percentages on. So as that aid gets to 25 million, then 3 percent of that counts.
Okay. That's good. Now, those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other community budget questions? Okay. We have a second report tonight, and Kristin Overhold and our principal from Harris Hill, Sue Corey, are going to present on the elementary RTI program.
Good evening. Tonight, Harris Hill principal Sue Corey and I will provide an overview on recent changes to our district response to intervention plan at the elementary level. We will review why these changes were necessary, what these changes are, and how they are currently being implemented at the elementary level. First, Mrs. Corey, an original member of the committee established in 2009, is going to provide a brief history of RTI in the district.
Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure of serving on the initial committee, as Kristin mentioned, and it was a very educating and interesting and really an opportunity to create something that will serve all of our students throughout the years. RTI originally came from NCLB, No Child Left Behind legislation, federal legislation. And each of the districts were required to create a response to intervention program, RTI, to serve their students. Our first steps were a number of administrators had the opportunity to do some research, some reading. We traveled to various districts. The current, at that time, the current special education director, Jim Maloney, had been working with Buffalo State College. We had the chance to meet with professionals and intervention specialists from Buffalo State. The next step, we thought, once we had gathered some information and were beginning to build ideas of where we'd like to go as a district, is we then turned to the specialists within our own district. We created a district response to intervention team. Each of the buildings were represented by teachers, therapists, reading specialists, their school psychologists. It was quite a good-sized committee at that time, and we got together to talk about and to plan how would we see the Clarence Response to Intervention program at the elementary levels. This group worked for a number of months throughout the summer. One of the things that we created was a toolkit, we called it, which was an online resource for teachers that were needing support for their students or additional ideas on how to differentiate instruction within their classroom. They could access this toolkit, which was a wonderful resource that was used quite a bit, and it was also an ongoing, ever-developing program in that we had it online. We then took a look at what the New York State model was, and that model was a little bit different, as you'll hear us talk about tonight, than we're looking at now. That model, as you can see in the next diagram, was a pyramid of three tiers. The first tier was classroom instruction, which was to be differentiated by the teacher. The second tier at this time, in the New York State model, recommended model, was where additional services would be provided. You would have a reading specialist working with children. You might have some special education teachers that were working with small groups. But it was a little more intense type of intervention than just a differentiated instructional program within the classroom. And then the third tier was to be the most intense, and that would be special education services or therapies that were provided to students. So as you could see with the arrows here, the original pyramid model was a pathway to special education services or therapies, a more organized approach on how to gain additional services for our students. Clarence added to this something we felt was important because we have a number of wonderful benefits through our paraprofessionals, through our aides that are in our building, as well as the number of the buildings have volunteers that assist in the classrooms. So we created between Tier One and Tier Two what we called the Bridge Tier. And this tier was where students would be able to, if they needed additional support in a particular standard or in a particular segment of their curriculum, they would be working with aides, or they would have a chance to work in a small group with a volunteer. So we called that the Bridge Tier. It really was in hopes that this would be what students would most benefit from. But as we took a look at it, we really started, and as all good educators do, they reflect continually. When you go and design something, it's always best to look back at it and say, is this the best it can be? Are we meeting all of the needs that we need to do? And that question was for us, does our current RTI structure reach and support all students? Regardless, all students? And we had to be honest with ourselves, and we said, no, we are not reaching all students. We can do a better job. We want to look to see what other avenues, what other programs are out there, other ways in which our teachers can address the needs of all students, whether it's a student that's in need of support or whether it's a student that's in need of extension. And that was the piece that we were missing, and we wanted to build upon. Kristin?
So a large share of the work, really looking at the RTI plan, started last summer. And as Sue pointed out, our current RTI structure has not been able to meet the needs of every student within the district. So we reconvened a district-wide team, and that committee consisted of 12 members across the district, representing all buildings as well as all levels. And that team attended the Solution Tree Response to Intervention Conference in Syracuse last summer. And it was there that we learned the newest trends and really best practice in response to intervention delivery. It was there also that we learned of an updated model, which Sue will show shortly, which provided us with a broader focus, including all students. Over the last several years, the district has been striving to implement professional learning communities in each building, or PLCs. And it was what we learned at this conference that really the work that we're doing is the right work within professional learning communities, and really, it's the professional learning community that will be the vehicle to continue the work, specifically looking at data, analyzing data, and then making determinations, are we doing what's best for students?
As you take a look and we talk about professional learning communities, in an elementary building, those communities are grade-level committees. So those are the teachers, the aides, the specialists that work with a specific grade level. And it's important for those PLCs to be able to meet on a regular basis. And that was one thing we had already started working on, looking for common planning time for each of the grade levels with possibly their special education teacher that provides services, the reading specialist, the additional intervention aides that work with them, to be able to get together and to talk about students and to talk about how well they're doing with the common core standards and the standards themselves or the structures, the skills. So in order to take those PLC structures that we already had in place, we now wanted to ask, all right, how can we meet the needs of all students? Let's look at the data that we had been gathering from the former model, which was our universal screening. We use the STAR reading program. We use the STAR math program, Fuentes and Pennell. There's a number of assessments that we use with the students throughout the school year, looking at that data and determining which areas are students in need of additional instruction or in which areas are they accelerated. And we can meet that need just as well. So we took a look at those professional learning communities. We had conversations, and we now took a look at a little bit of a different model. You'll notice our pyramid has been flipped upside down, and as they explained to us at the Solution Tree Conference, just like an ice cream cone, the best stuff is at the top. So when you look at Tier One, we're talking about quality differentiated instruction that all students are receiving within their classroom. You first, you must first start there to make sure that all of the teachers within that professional learning community, then within that building itself, are providing students with that high-quality differentiated instruction. That's the first step. That's Tier One. Tier Two, much different than we had been considering Tier Two in the past, but Tier Two was still working within that grade level, working within that PLC, but now looking at how can we, within that current schedule, within that current structure of the child's day, provide for those students that need some much more differentiated, whether it, again, be extension or intervention. So that's where Tier Two is a little bit different. And until Tier Three, it talks about, that's the first time it begins to talk about utilizing a specialist or a therapist. So as you'll notice, the majority of this model is the responsibility of those members of the professional learning committee, of the professional learning community. And as you can see on the next slide, we'll share it with you here, we talk about all students having access... students having access to grade-level essential standards. We've all been provided with pages and pages of those New York State standards, but we needed to dig into them. What were the essentials? What is the core structure, the core initial standard, that we want all students to be able to have the opportunity to receive quality education in? When you go to Tier Two, it talks about still those essential skills, but now providing in a differentiated setting, and I'll give you an example in a little while, of how you can meet the needs within that team. This isn't adding additional staff. This is using your staff wisely, and using them in a different structure, which we'll tell you a little bit about. And then, of course, the intensive remediation is through those universal skills. As I mentioned, that's where your therapist, that's where your specialist, your intervention aides are working with much smaller groups of students. As this shows, it talks about Tier One, prevention through standard-based, high-quality instruction. Again, looking at those core standards, but breaking them down to the essentials, so that teachers are looking at very specific things as they're doing, they're providing children with their instruction. Their intervention begins through targeted groupings that they have their standards focused on. And just an example of how that would work is, in our, let's say, our reading, or writing, or math, all of the children are receiving that core instruction, differentiated within the classroom, whether it be through the workshop model or a different structure, but they're receiving that core instruction, and then they take that information, whether it be through their formative assessments, looking at the children's classwork, looking at assessments, looking at their universal screening, and they meet as a team. And they talk about, and they're very open with each other, and they talk about how things have been going in that particular unit. And they talk about what they need to do, what are the needs of the students that they need to meet, how can they go about doing that? Well, their PLC group, if you'll remember, doesn't exist, or doesn't just have maybe those four classroom teachers. It also includes that special education teacher that's assigned to that grade level, the aides that are assigned to that grade level, if there are any, the reading specialist, if they're available during that time. They identify a time when they can use all of those folks, and then take another step of differentiation. So moving even to a more specific guided approach within their instructions. And then the Tier Three talks about remediation. These are students that, well, they're working along with their class, they have Tier Two interventions, they're working within the PLC members, but they still need a little additional support. That's, as I mentioned, where your reading specialist or your therapist would come into play. So as the next diagram illustrates, you have children in this ice cream cone, receiving core, everyone receives the core, everyone receives core and a little bit more, and then a very small group, as you see at the bottom of the cone, a very small group receives core, the more, from Tier Two. But on top of that, they also have intervention provided by a specialist, if needed.
So this year, over the summer, our district ELA committee determined specifically the essential skills within each unit for our Lucy Cawkins writing units of study. We decided to start specifically with writing curriculum, because, actually, there are three reasons why we decided to start with writing. This would be our third year in the implementation of the writing curriculum specifically, and teachers are really feeling quite comfortable at this point with the curriculum. We also definitely saw a need within writing intervention itself. And the third reason is because this really provided us an opportunity to address the needs of our special education students, but also the needs of those students who needed some redirecting in terms of writing skills specifically, without having to recommend those students for special education services. So the district committee presented the new model to all four elementary buildings at the faculty meetings in September. The building RTI teams also reviewed their role within the implementation of the new model. And, again, within the buildings themselves, we've been working with teams on coordinating and pacing instruction, specifically within the grade-level teams, working as a PLC to monitor and analyze student progress by using formative and summative assessment data, as well as using teams and building resources to intervene with students. So again, going back to those four guiding questions that Sue had spoken of earlier, within the professional learning communities, what do we want students to learn? And again, that question is driven by the standards themselves, and what standards are addressed within the writing curriculum? How will we know when students have learned it? And that evidence is provided within the data from the summative and formative assessments. What will we do when students haven't learned? Again, that goes back to, what interventions are we providing that best meet the needs of that student? And then what will we do if they already know it? So what extension can we provide beyond what we're currently doing in that primary instruction?
So as we take a look at, talking about PLCs, talking about differentiation, using the staffing that we currently have, I thought I would share just a couple examples that we've developed at Harris Hill. For example, at first grade, when the teachers and the students were working on the report writing unit, at first grade, we do have a report writing unit. Their reports, though, look very similarly to how-to books, where the children are given the chance to write a book about how to do something that they feel that they're an expert at. It might be something like baking cookies, it might be riding my bike after I take the training wheels off. It's something they're familiar with, and it's looking at those components, such as the table of contents, illustrations, they might even create a glossary of terms in their how-to books. So what the first-grade teachers did is, they taught the essential skills that had been identified by the ELA committee, they made sure that all the children in that Tier One received that through differentiated instruction in what we call the writer's workshop model. They then meet as a group weekly. I join them once a month, but they meet weekly. They take a look at the information they have, they look at student work, they look at pre- and post-assessments that they've done with the students, they take a look at writing samples that they've had. They then take a look at, by looking through all of those different components, what are our students in need of? At first grade, we were able to not only make available the four teachers, but we also had two aides and one special education teacher available at a specific time, because we thought about this right from the very first building of that master schedule. We wanted to identify one 30-minute block, once a week, at least, more if we could do it, but at least one 30-minute block, once a week, that all of those individuals were available, so that we could take a look at the students' work and determine which groups needed which intervention. So you have your four teachers, your two aides, your special education teachers. So I have seven interventionists now available to this first-grade group of students. We then took a look at who would work with which group of students, and what were the interventions they were going to be providing. For some students, it may be as simple as learning to, well, not as simple, but it may be as basic as learning how to spell those sight words and using my sight words correctly in my writing. Other students may need specific interventions and additional instruction in constructing their table of contents, or using, formulating complete sentences. However, there were a number of students that were ready to go. They had done a beautiful job with their how-to books. They did not need those basic skills. So we made sure one interventionist, a classroom teacher, was working with a group of children on an extension in report writing. In the first round, and we usually, we are usually looking at four to six weeks for each of these intervention sessions, the first round was where the students were able to pick an additional topic and write an additional how-to book. So they felt comfortable with that, because remember, we've now scrambled them up, so they're very possibly working with a new teacher. And for first graders, it takes some time to get used to working with a new teacher. So we wanted to have them feel comfortable with that. Once they worked through that, working on an additional report, we took it to the next step. We said, alright, now we're going to have you select a topic. So the teacher had predetermined some topics, and we're going to access the library online resources that the children can use. So they were on the computers now, not only researching a topic, again, they selected, but they were using their online resources to learn more about that topic, because it was a topic that they had selected, but the teacher had originally determined. So you've taken them out of their comfort zone just a little bit. This may not be something they know enough about to write a how-to book on, or an informational book on. The third session with that group, now remember that the other groups are possibly moving, they're very fluid, if children are ready to move into a different intervention, that can occur at any time, but to keep this extension group moving forward, the teacher then determined what their topic was going to be. So she totally took them out of their comfort zone, gave them an assignment topic for them to do the research on, very similarly to how they'll experience it in middle school and upper grades. So they were being, you know, their writing was being extended, and it was very exciting to watch them, because they were thrilled with being able to meet this challenge. Again, you have students that are working on their basic skills, you have students that are refining their writing, but that's an example of what our first-grade team did. Our third-grade team also was working with their students, but theirs were in essays. And their genre that they were studying were essays. So they looked at the pre-assessments that come along with the Lucy Cawkins writing assignments, they also take a look at the students writing in other areas, such as social studies or science. They're writing responses for math, because there's so much more writing in math now. They took a look at all of this information. Again, we have access to three teachers, this time I have access to two special education teachers that we built their schedule around, and then we have one aide. So they have a number of interventionists, they were able to look at what the children's needs were and how to meet their needs, and they did something very similar. But without the PLC structure, without that comfort level of talking to each other and saying, you know, here's what Johnny needs, or here's what I'd like Billy to have the opportunity, this doesn't work as well. So it's something that we're growing in. Developing a PLC takes time. It truly takes time, and it takes trust, and it takes comfort, working in comfort with your grade level, and that's huge. But what we're beginning to see is, once teachers are comfortable with that and they are working as a team, the children just grow and benefit, so in the area of writing. And one of our third-grade teachers commented, the last time I sat with them during Huddle, was that it was so exciting, because very often at third grade, as they start to write longer passages, your punctuation, your capitalization, it tends to slide, because now they're really excited about a topic, and they tend to forget those very basic things. She was so excited to be able to say that, you know, she had received a piece of writing from all of her students, and there wasn't any editing that she needed to do on this particular piece, and she's never seen that in all of her years of teaching third grade. That in itself was a huge, huge step forward, and shows that the new model that we have in place, the new response to intervention piece, program, or process, I should say, is working very well, and we'd like to see it continue on. So, one of the things that I got thinking about as we were finishing up this presentation is, we always talk about all of this alphabet soup. You've heard RTI, you may have also heard of AIS, and that was a bit of confusion for the teachers, well, what's the difference between RTI and AIS? And probably the easiest way to explain that is, RTI, Response to Intervention, is a pathway, it's a process, it's a necessary process for children to be able to garner and become very competent using the standards. AIS is more of a program, it is something that is part of RTI. It is not the same as RTI, and I know that was very confusing for some of the teachers in the beginning, because they heard about AIS, they knew that remedial reading was an AIS intervention and that type of thing. And so until we saw that response to intervention was more of a pathway, a way for all children to exceed and be successful in the area of writing, if it was difficult for them to understand. And then as we close it here, this was a wonderful quote that they shared with us at the Solution Tree, and I think it really summed everything up quite nicely. What we know today does not make yesterday wrong. What we were providing students with before was excellent. We were making sure that our students that needed that support were receiving it, and we were doing an excellent job doing that. But we, as the quote says, can only make tomorrow better, and that's exactly what we were able to do, is take the staff that we have in place and use it just slightly differently, a lot more collaboratively, and be able to meet the needs of so many more students through the Response to Intervention program.
Are there any questions?
So, I just had one, I mean, you talk about some of the changes that started in 2009 and then more, you know, more recently. What was the classroom like, kind of, pre-2009? Like, you talked about differentiation in the context of the classroom. When did that actually start to get really deployed in Clarence? Is that something that predates some of the 2009 work, or was that really when that kind of fundamental element started taking place?
I think probably the greatest change that I noticed is when we began to implement the workshop model. Because through a workshop model, you are definitely differentiating from the very first day. Students are going to be, you assess them at which level they're to be working on, and then the teacher must instruct at that level. So you had many different guided reading groups going on, or guided writing groups going on, you had the conferencing that was going on. So as soon as we started to differentiate a great deal more, I would have to say, from the former model before this, then we started to see that the teachers were becoming more comfortable with that workshop model, they were ready to take a look at, alright, what's the next step, and how can I meet the needs of students in 2009 that were struggling?
And we've been implementing the workshop model for approximately...
Oh, a number of years.
Twelve, 12, 13 years.
I came to Harris Hill in 2003, and at that time, the district was working with John Olfelhaven and his group, which some of you may remember. And he was really the initial staff developer that brought the idea of the reader's workshop. And then we moved from that to adding the writer's workshop.
So, explain to me about the timeframe, because as the content and the information that you have to cover accelerates as they get older, what type of timeframe can you operate under this, so that nobody gets left behind? You know, for the students that need, that don't get it in the timeframe that you're planning for a unit or something, what happens then?
That's actually the beauty of this new model, because before, it was always that, oh my gosh, they're being pulled out for remedial reading, and then, you know, how are we going to make sure that they receive the core instruction? What we've done with this is, all of the students receive core instruction in reading, writing, and math. We do not pull from those areas for them to receive additional support. What we've done in writing, and we've only just started with writing, what we've done in writing is identify that one time a week where it's still their writing block, but they're all working in an area, in a subject, or a skill, rather, that they need in writing. So not being pulled out to do something separately, we're really honing in on a very specific skill. So they're not missing instruction at all. We're taking that kind of little commercial break, one time a week, to make sure that we focus on, whether it be organization of writing, or their structure of their sentences or something along that line, so that they're still continuing to move along with the curriculum, so that you are able to accomplish what needs to be accomplished in a year. But we take that one-time-a-week break for them to be able to slow down and meet that need.
Now, a lot of the questions you answered while you were doing your presentation, the, I don't know if it's been in place long enough, have you noticed a change in racing to have someone classified? You know, having this model and the interventions and catch it early?
Definitely. I would say definitely, and I can only speak for Harris Hill, but I would say we definitely have. If we were to look at the number of students that we classified pre-response to intervention to the number of students that we classify now, definitely. We're also required to present a great deal of data and information on, before we would even consider or have a conversation about receiving special education services, what response to intervention services have we provided? We must document all of that. And so that mindset has needed to change a great deal, too. And that's where I think, you know, we're seeing, just taking that time to work with the students in that core area, rather than saying, black or white, you have it, you don't have it. That's gone.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
With regards to the PLCs, if I understood correctly, all the buildings got together and were, kind of, presented the concept over the summer?
Correct.
Is there an opportunity for them to interact across buildings, or is that an opportunity going forward, just for best practices across, you know, the grade four PLCs in the four buildings?
Right.
We mostly are utilizing our staff development days for grade-level teams across the district to be able to convene.
We, we mostly are utilizing our staff development days for grade level teams across the district to be able to convene.
I think, too, the addition of the study groups, which is another very positive thing that the district has added over the last few years. And you have study groups that are built around either the writing units or the reading units. That gives teachers across buildings the chance to meet as grade levels and not only talk about the particular genre that they're going to be moving into, but it's also a wonderful time to dialogue about things that have been going on. So we are seeing an increase in the opportunity for them to speak across buildings, yes. And as, as we mentioned earlier, when we did, we called it the roadshow, and we did presentations at each of the buildings, after that, then the building principals met with their staffs to take a look at, all right, how are we going to be able to implement this new process?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Move to finance, Mr. Mancuso.
Items F1 and F2, the financial reports. The thing I wanted to note is I did include our bid and purchasing calendar in there. It's a good guideline for us in the office and I think for the board to see. The main item next year to be aware of is we have our big food service contract that's up to date. Ms. Claus, maybe if we could have a motion for that, because the other ones need separate ones.
Okay. Okay. So were there any questions? We'll start with F1, financial reports. Okay, need a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. The Schedule of Bills, check warrant, any questions? Okay, if not, a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chairperson of the Voting and Election Inspectors.
So the next item is Ryan Losinski, a local attorney who has been a chairperson of the vote before. It's volunteer, it's time to chair our vote for May 16. And we have a list of 32 inspectors for our vote we'd like to have you appoint tonight.
Okay, any questions? Then a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next item is actually approving for the vote our $80,299,240 budget for next year, which includes a tax levy not to exceed $46,74675. Also attached to that, everything else, Dr. Hicks went over a little earlier tonight, but also attached the debt reserve analysis. As that going forward, as we know, between our regular reserve appropriation and unappropriated balances at $720,000 will work well as we move into next year and beyond. June of 2018, when we close out next year's budget, is when the decision is made to tap into that reserve or to just use our normal unappropriated reserves. And it certainly is contingent on how, how well the budget goes expenditure-wise and revenue-wise throughout the year. So we'll keep you updated as the year progresses. We'd like to recommend that we approve the budget total and the tax levy proposal.
Okay. Motion on F4?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The Driver Education Program.
Yes. So next year, we're recommending the same company, the Days Driving School. It's actually at the same price. Their bid is $325,000, yeah, $225,000 per student. It's all those big numbers. And the total cost, including the classroom portion for a participant, would stay at $475, savings this year.
A motion to approve? F5.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we'll move to the addition, which is the acceptance of the candidate's position, which is on, which was an addition on your desk.
Yes, we have the three open seats. And Mrs. Andrews, Mr. Scott, and Mrs. Snyder all have verified petitions and will be candidates for the board. We'd like to have you accept their petition.
Okay, a motion for the acceptance of the candidate's petitions?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Personnel, Dr. Patak.
We have a number of items before you this evening, beginning with requests for leaves of absence, requests for reinstatement to active employment, appointments including ELA tutoring Services, the ELA Committee meeting after school, School-to-Work Program, notification of tenure appointments, no action required this evening. This is simply for notification purposes, actions to take place at the May meeting, presentation compensation, and additions to the substitute teacher list.
Any questions on P1 through P6?
I just have a question on P6. Some of the substitute teachers, I obviously know that mostly every district is short substitutes, but I'm just curious on some of the addresses of these substitutes that are, seem to be hours away. How does that work into? I mean, do they take positions? I mean, I just, just curious.
Well, we can't-
I mean, you, I know you can't void them out, but I'm just saying, do you, do you find them that they do come and work in the district even though we, we do approve them?
And in some cases, these are permanent addresses versus a place they may be currently living.
Okay.
A motion to approve?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Non-instructional.
We have three resignations, all for purposes of retirement, representing 55 years of service to the district, appointments in transportation, as well as in, for the classroom and Buildings and Grounds Department, extracurricular for the Clarence High School Musical, informational item, and additions and deletions of substitutes within the non-instructional ranks.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Motion to approve P7 through P10.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Hicks, the Special Needs and Student Activities?
Just before I get into that, Ms. Claus, I just want to remind the board that our radio commercial for bus drivers should be airing pretty close to this week, correct, Rick? So we're hopeful to get some massive increases in our bus driver. We're hoping to get a couple of people to apply to be bus drivers as a result of that. Okay. There were 49 Committee on Special Education meetings this month. This is really prime time for annual reviews. The large majority of kids for these particular meetings were from Harris Hill and out-of-district placements. And then there were 28 for the Committee on Preschool Special Education Meetings.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, we need a motion to approve S1 and S2.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we have a second reading of the Board of Ed Policy Manual Review in the 2000 section. Noted that no one sent in any changes other than the ones that we did to update.
Right, there were no suggestions other than the OCs-
Required.
-for revising that small section.
Okay.
And so, or the education could either, you could discuss this or approve it this evening.
Does anyone want to continue to discuss it?
Make a motion to approve it this evening.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we move to the second public comment session. Anyone has any questions? I ask that you walk to the microphone and give your name for follow-up purposes. None? Okay, we'll move on to, before you see our, all of our end-of-the-year meetings. A reminder, tomorrow morning, we have the budget, Erie One Budget Vote and Board, tomorrow morning, 7:30 in the morning, as well as upcoming receptions and our regular, next regular meeting is May 8, which will be the budget, pub, public, pub, budget public hearing, as well as recognition dinner. Lots of talent shows, orchestra concerts, et cetera, that are coming up at this time of the year. Any other questions or things to be brought up? Then I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for discussing the employment history of a particular person saying legal issues involving confidential student matters.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?